Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Turn off my cellphone. Thank you so much everyone for coming. As I sometimes do, I want to start off with some thanks and a couple of words of recognition. I want to thank all of the people responsible for shepherding the school and the students and the staff and all members of our educational community through a difficult time with the weather and through a... I mean even today, my 5:00 AM drive was in snow and my 4:00 PM drive was in glorious sunshine. It was absolutely a crazy time. So, these are challenging events when they happen and the collaboration and teamwork was obviously evident. So, thank you very much for everyone for doing that. And my word of recognition is for... It is a very exciting time of year. This is the youth basketball playoff fortnight and there are 300 DS kids from grade four, five, six, seven and eight boys and girls playing in Metro West League playoffs this week. At the end of the first week, on Monday, 10 of the 23 teams are still alive. I have to give special mention to the excellent eighth grade boys top team who were moved up to Division One for the playoffs and they beat North Quincy, the sixth best team in the Metro West area.
In double overtime?
In double overtime. It was enormously exciting to go through, so congratulations to them. The eighth grade girls are playing now in Dedham and I wish them all the luck. And I think just maybe the other note is, all of the three sixth grade boys teams have made it to their respective division quarterfinals. So, it's a big thing if you're a young basketball player aged between the ages of...
Or old.
Or old basketball player, yes, exactly. But grade four, five, six, seven, eight, well done everybody and thank you to all the coaches who probably have given north of 150 hours of their volunteer time, so thank you. So, I'd like to open the meeting, if I could, for any community comments, if anyone has anything to say. This is the time of the meeting where we do invite any community comments if there are any. Okay, thank you so much. Moving on, it's with enormous pleasure, I welcome Jim from the PTO for an update from the PTO. The PTO are very much the other side of the coin for the school committee. I always see it like that and if one or the other is to work properly, there needs to be good communication and respect between the two. I could not have hoped for a better relationship this year, so thanks very much. And we look forward, a couple of times a year, we ask the PTO, "Come and give an update", and thank you Jim for coming.
Yeah, thank you, welcome. It's been a great, it's been a great year so far. We are, as you know, coming into our big auctions, it's our final auction year and Le Bon Temps de Ruler, right? It's the 24th of March, so please join us. It's gonna, the theme is Mardi Gras this year, I hope you've all received your tickets. And we are looking, everything appears to be on track. I think it's difficult, the last two weeks I guess have been a big push for ticket sales. The donations have been great. We are still, I'll further this out to the larger audience as well, we are still looking for some concert tickets or event tickets for this bulk assignment and live auctions, so that's been good. Our team this year has been fantastic. Dina and Peggy have really done a great job with getting everything together and we're looking forward to that. In regards to that, hopefully it's a successful year for the auction because this funds next year.
That's great.
The continuing, the CE stuff has been fantastic. I've really enjoyed some of the feedback I've gotten on some of the programs. I don't know if you've had any feedback from the programs or your kids have brought any home. And I've been extremely impressed with the events they've put on this year. Some of the new ones, I think it was the, what was the Brazilian drill in there? That was a new one that was really great. And then there will be a video that they're editing together now at the auction, just to say thanks to some of the teachers and students and faculty and parents who volunteered time to put it together. So, I want to put that up to the larger audience. I was hoping to have a 30-second rough cut to show tonight, just a teaser, unfortunately it didn't get together, so hopefully we'll have that for the next meeting.
Well, I sent in my flash price raffle tickets. Extremely keen to get the, just, I'm sure it's a chance obviously when the raffles are pulled, but I'm very interested in the two tickets at the fifth grade celebration.
I hear that. Now, for me, I think the big thing was the parking.
Yeah.
And it had gotten hit last year by a plough, so I had it replaced and they did a beautiful job, looked great, and then one day later it is squash flat. Somebody backed into it and crushed it. So, we're in the process of getting that fixed with the town department and the highway department. So, that craze has been very responsive in that regard.
Does it have your name on it already?
No, it doesn't. And I know, just from the behind the scenes, I know there's been intense interest. Unfortunately, I guess that weekend is the last weekend of a lot of the ski teams that people race on, so some people can't make it. So, they've pre-purchased their raffle opportunities, which has been great.
And will there be, other than the raffle tickets, sometimes there are items that are online before the event, is that possible?
I don't think we're going to be doing much online. There will be live, small, you know, small bid items, but as well as the live auction.
Brilliant.
Should be a good event.
Thanks so much. And with my head of youth soccer hat on, I know that we put together a package and this year, what we did for Pine Hill CSA auction last year was a, and we're doing for the auction this year, is a lifetime membership for one of the kids, so one of them will stay in the program.
Yeah, there's some great, there's some great items.
Brilliant, thank you so much. Any questions to Jim?
Sounds awesome.
Thank you very much mate, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. I'd love to say this, you know, unfortunately I have to get back to it. I would welcome the opportunity to come after the event and see how we end it up.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jim. Okay, so the next item is the public hearing on the proposed FY19 budget. This is for the chance for myself to give a presentation on the budget and invite any discussion from the school committee. This presentation will then be given on March 19th at the town open hearing. My good friend Henry will be giving that presentation. And it's really the chance for the school committee to communicate a couple of times, but very thoroughly before town meeting. So, I'm going to do that and invite any discussion, and then we'll go into reports afterwards. So, I'm going to actually ask Andrew to speak to this first slide, given the fact that the strategic objectives that were communicated by another couple of meetings previously, they're really going to be driving a lot of the, almost all of what we do as a community for our schools in the coming years. And given the fact that a lot of what can help drive that is allocation resources, I thought it was appropriate for Andrew to talk to these strategic, proposed strategic objectives first, and then I'll go.
Absolutely, thank you. So, when we were building the budget on the school side, excuse me, one second, I apologize. How did I turn that off? On the school side, we wanted to make sure that we were being thoughtful, that anything that we were bringing forward to the school committee for consideration was consistent with our district goals and also with our future goals. These are what we hope to be our future goals. The strategic plan that I've been constructing based on all of my entry, meetings, conversations, data review, document review, all of that, when boiled down and synthesized, really became these five goals. High at the top of the list of priorities for people in these two communities was in fact resource efficiency, because we don't have a large commercial base. We are primarily dependent on personal real estate taxes and that means we have to absolutely constantly be efficient. I heard that over and over again and we've tried to do that in building this budget. And so, we put this slide up front because we really want people to know that these are our goals moving forward and these are our top priorities. Of course, this is not final yet because we haven't put the complete plan in front of the joint school committees, but we did feel like it was important to highlight that resource efficiency because that is something for the future for us.
Brilliant, thank you. Moving on, it's just important to say at the very beginning that the budget that we have constructed for FY19, we feel like it supports towns, aim to deliver learning outcomes that are one of the highest in the state, but also be in compliance with the state mandates that we have for special education and our school district policies that we're very proud of. For example, the class size being no less than 17 and no more than 22. And also in complying with our responsibility to keep safe both the town facilities and the people who work in as assets. What we've done, we've built the budget with an appreciation for the town's financial situation and the guidelines this year from Dover Warren, which provide level service compared to last year. It's important that this is the operating budget and people should know that it does not include several items. The first one, it doesn't include healthcare costs for school employees. These are rolled up into the overall town healthcare costs. They don't include the chapter 70 revenues of about $800,000. And chapter 70, for those people who don't know, is the main mechanism by which the state sends money for town education facilities. And also circuit breaker reimbursement of $990,000, which offsets the FY19 costs to the town and the taxpayers. It also, in the operating budget, does not include any capital requests. I will say this year, and I really have to step back and thank again the town for their very generous approval of the capital request last town meeting. And it was wonderful to come in to lots of happy faces with air conditioning working in August and September. And the words from teachers and parents, it certainly seemed that it was a very significant change to working in classroom situations with children in those very, very hot shoulder and late summer days. So, we are not having any capital requests to the town for Chickering School this year and we say that with pride and with thanks for what happened last year. This is the summary slide, and so for Chickering School expenses, the FY19 budget is $7,223,925. That's a change of 1.81%. And then you have the out of district expenses broken down by tuition and transportation, which results in a total out of district component of the overall budget, an increase of 0.06%. And a total Dover Public Schools FY19 budget request of $10,437,843 is an increase of 1.26% on last year. And we'll show this again a second time as we go through. So, this is a slide pulling out the budget drivers for how did that 1.81% increase come to be? As with any large and complex budget, there are some increases, there are some decreases. And I just want to go through these because I think it's important for people to understand the dynamics. So, as people who have watched and listened and attended these school committee meetings before, we have a reduction of one section for FY19. This is to do with keeping line with the class size policies and a reduced enrollment size in the grades as they march through year by year. And that's a decrease of $60,000. In terms of educator salary increases, as per the contract, they are 2% on the top step and 1% within the matrix. And that means that there's a salary increase there of $165,000. That number is separate from the other noted changes in this line, but it's worth pointing that out. After the FY18 budget was approved, there were some staffing changes which resulted in a net decrease to the educator salary base of $45,000. After that, we're adding, as the Spanish program marches through the years and the grades and we come to the momentous fifth grade rollout, we're adding 0.5 FTE plus teacher, which is an increase of $30,000. Post FY18 budget, there were two special education assistants added. They've been here in the building, they've been working, but it's after the FY18 budget was approved, so that technically should be reflected as an increase over the approved budget last year, and that's an increase of $47,000. There's an increase in FY19 technology replacement needs. The overall technology replacement spend for FY19 is $41,500. This is a number of Chromebooks that need replacing, five interactive whiteboards that are now going through a replacement cycle, some Cisco switching and some new access points. And this is part of the region-wide technology replacement plan that each of the four schools are adhering to. But for Chickering School, that is an $11,600 increase over last year's technology replacement There's an increase of $16,000, which is a cost for summer services, summer services related to our pre-K students, our new pre-K students and others on IEPs that were not fully budgeted in FY18. The next item, which is the decrease of $10,900, that is the reduction in cost year from year because of last year's large expense of the math, everyday math curriculum upgrade. That's obviously not happening this year, which is, means a decrease year on year. There's a small increase of $1,155 for the fourth year of our bus contract. There is a decrease of $13,000, which is the Dover Public School share of a central business office staff reduction, going from 0.5 to 0.3. Again, I think the efficiency word jumps out at me from Andrew's first slide there. In the budget, the custodial substitute line has been eliminated. The work is still, obviously needs to be done, but it's done by custodians substituting and existing custodians substituting for each other and over time. Therefore, there doesn't need to be a line for that anymore. Again, I think this speaks to an efficient process. And that's a decrease of $6,500. And the last item is adjustment of maintenance expenses, which are on historical trends look to be less than one would have expected previously, but also we had to spend an amount of money for the onsite insight report update, the capital replacement plan for the building that was revamped and refreshed last year. We don't have to do that, spend that money again this year, hence the decrease of $9,300. If anyone has any questions, please ask. As on summary slide again, just to remind you, so that was the breakup of the 1.8% increase. I'm going to talk about the out of district items now. Yes, Jim?
So, what is the duration for out of district, so I mean, you know?
No, sorry. So, the out of district cost is for students who have special education needs that are deemed to be served appropriately out of the, out of the schools in Dover and Sherburne. So, these are students for whom the fair and appropriate educational environment is a specialist school or specialist program outside of the school. And it's a federally mandated law that the town should provide those education facilities to those students. We try very hard wherever we can to try and do that in the district. We have fantastic teachers and fantastic programs here, but sometimes those students for whom the best place and the fairest place and the appropriate place is not in Dover or Sherburne, and that's when they're out of district.
Adrian?
Yeah.
It's important to note, because it looks like such a big number, but it's actually for all of our out of district placed students in Dover, K to age 22.
Three.
Sorry, three, pre-K really, three, age three to 22 years old, Dover and Sherburne. Sherburne's responsible for their population of students who have to be educated outside the system and Dover's responsible for theirs. So, it looks like a really sizable number, but many of those students are actually coming from the middle school or high school. It's really all three.
But this took my mind in, is the Chickering share, right?
It's not, it's Dover town share. So, if my son, for example, has a particular need that is best served at a different school, from age three to 22, the town of Dover is legally obligated to pay for that. So, that, so it's 19 years of their life from age three to 22. So, to think of it as, that's why on the top line it says Dover Public School rather than Chickering, because there's this, there's Chickering element to the budget and then there's our students who are, have needs that need to be served elsewhere.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay. And obviously for out of district, there are two components. There are the tuition, but because they're not in the town of Dover, they have to be transported to there. So, it could be, it could be in the town of Medfield or Brockton, or it could be somewhere in New Hampshire, so hence the transportation.
And some of those are residential placements as well, so that's, they live at the, they're residential placements, so those are even costlier. Some of them.
Okay. So, again, so next slide, it's special education, again, it's a federally mandated program, students with needs from the ages of three and 22. I think it's one of the greatest expressions of how civilized our society is and it's something I'm very proud to talk about. Again, the services are to meet the legal standard of free, appropriate public education and they're to be provided in the least restrictive environment. For FY19, this budget includes funding for 32 students placed out of district. There is a circuit breaker reimbursement that comes from the state and this comes back to the town. And I'll talk about it later, but it's normally between 65 to 70% of the cost of educating these students. However, it comes late and it comes with obscure guidance on how great it will actually be. So, traditionally it's been between 65 and 70%.
The last, the last.
The last few years.
Yeah.
Last few years. What I think is extremely valuable in the town's budgeting process is that we as a town and community budget for this expense assuming no circuit breaker reimbursement. So, we assume zero circuit breaker reimbursement and then when it comes, it becomes, the town is very grateful for it and we have, we have budgeted in the most sober and prudent way. Other towns do it differently.
There may be 990 some circuit breaker reinforcement that we receive this year.
That goes against that $3 million.
As incur, we will receive it, will offset this year's cost.
Theoretically, yeah.
So, again, there are drivers to this and I'll just talk about it. Obviously, with, when you're dealing with assessments of the most appropriate education for children in this situation, their needs can be fluid and change throughout the course of a year. But the way this, the budget is built at the moment, we have five placements graduating or aging out. So, either graduating from the need or aging beyond 22, and that decreases versus last year by $260,000. There are two placements who have been, who have been receiving education out of the district, who have returned back to Dover Sherburne. And this is tremendous, both from a, both from a community perspective, from children back in, in our town perspective, and also I think it's a wonderful reflection of the extensive programming and enhancements that's gone on all throughout the school, the schools, the four schools in the district. So, it's tremendous to see. And that's a decrease of $100,000. There's one placement who has moved residency, moved out of Dover, they've moved house. And so therefore, they're no longer a student of Dover, so that decrease is $20,000. There are some net increases from change in placements and again, the change in placements mean that there are, the education institution at which the student has been receiving education has changed to meet their needs better, and that's resulted in FY19 of an increase of There are three new out of district placements, $214,000. The assumption for tuition increase for this component is 3%, which is $72,000. For the first time in almost living memory, there's a decrease in out of district transportation costs of $58,700. And this is the way that the COBORD is made up. There's a decrease in number of riders and there's a decrease in length of trips. It's not always been the case, but this is how it looks for FY19, which is fantastic. And then just noting at the bottom, this is not included in the, in the budget as I mentioned before, but the circuit breaker reimbursement for FY19, assuming a 65% reimbursement rate, will be $990,000. Wanted to include this slide, just to talk about how the district in all the schools have implemented new initiatives in recent years to try and keep as many students having the opportunity to have their appropriate education in district. And we've, at the high school, there's been tremendous investment in the language-based life schools program there. Here at Chickering, very proud of the integrated pre-K classroom that was proven creative a couple of years ago. The language-based consultant work, the development of the response to intervention protocols so that students with particular needs can be helped earlier and more appropriately. And working cross-district to try and share best practice, share cost savings and share programming insights, I think is something we're extremely proud of. And again, to, just to re-emphasize the point that I said, the circuit breaker is not included in this budget, but the FY19, assuming 65% reimbursement rate, should be $990,000, but we're delighted that we don't budget for that. Thank you very much to everybody. I want to thank people at Central Office, I want to thank Dawn and Andrew for their immense work on this, the school committee there, and the leadership team here in the building, who guide a lot of the priorities that lie in here. If anyone has any questions, let me have it asked, or anyone can ask that. See, in a few years' time, Henry won't have to do this, there'll be a hologram.
I would just make one comment, which I really appreciated your saying about the least restrictive environment, because the special ed law insists that students be educated as close to the general ed population as possible. So, we take that very seriously. We want all of our students to be able to attend the public schools. That's the intent of the law and I agree with you, Adrian. It is a truly special law. You don't see that all over the world. This is a commitment by our country to educating our students with special needs in as close to the mainstream setting as possible. But unfortunately, it just doesn't always work out and sometimes those changes in placements require that a student can't make it here mid-year. It could be such that they just can't make it mid-year or they're at some other school already outside and have to move again. So, it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge for us, but we are absolutely committed. And one of those goals in the strategic plan is actually about looking at our special education programming to make sure that we're doing all that we can to keep kids in-house. Because at the end of the Because at the end of the day, it's better for the kids, all of the kids, the students with special needs and the students who are not special needs students, all benefit. So I appreciate very much you bringing that up.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Now we move on to the much more interesting part of the meeting, reports.
Oh, no, wait, you have to.
Oh, sure.
A very important part.
So I would like to call for a vote approving the FY19 budget as has been presented and worked on by Central Office. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Perfect. So, on to the reports. Ms. Diallo.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work that this committee and folks at Central Office have done to create a comprehensive, but mostly a very thoughtful budget that does reflect the needs of our students and responds to the changing needs of our students from year to year. I really appreciate that. Thank you. A lot of the things that are happening now at school are our ones that we've talked about in terms of the curriculum that we continue to work through that is new for us this year. I think what really resonates for me throughout the year with the guidance of Dr. Keough is our focus on really connecting with kids and taking care of them. And unfortunately, some of the tragedies in our country bring us back to reconsider that from time to time and really give due weight to the importance of connecting with our children, with each other, and how important it is to take time for that. So I greatly appreciate the fact that that is a priority for the entire district and certainly continues to be so for Chicaring. We are moving into curriculum from that. We are, we have assembled a group, a vertical group, to look at the draft history and social science standards proposed by the state so that we can provide feedback. I think it's easy to get very involved in our own work at school, but it's nice to be thinking about contributing to that larger state discussion about what will work well for students. So that's coming up soon. Professional development continues to move forward. There was such a positive response from the professional development that day after Thanksgiving, and Beth McCoy has very kindly offered to arrange future PD sessions for staff at all four schools, depending on the preference of people, and we're really looking forward to tap into that and to continuing that focus for next year as well. The cultural response of this is so important. That's coming up. We have hired a few more people since we met last time and are still in process with a few more folks, and we just continue to grow, which is very exciting. It's a great opportunity for us to be able to bring in new staff members with different perspectives, shedding light on what we do day in, day out. So that's been a gift, as is our veteran staff helping those folks acclimate to our school and to grow professionally. Do you have any questions?
How many openings do we have, then? Please don't leave us with...
Well, we have some unofficial things that I'm not sure if we're prepared to share yet. But we are finalizing the new staff members going into the maternity leaves in grade three.
So minus those, you remember how we were looking to add a couple of assistants in kindergarten or whatever came out a couple of months ago? Just in general, not even anticipating anything. Are we in good shape?
We are very good shape there, yes.
So anticipating changes, other than that, we're fully staffed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
I have two things. So I wanted to, I was reading the professional development paragraph, and I was, on the second line, I was about to write, please, could you send, could you give an example? Oh, she's just about to give an example. So giving that example of the kindness group and the different layers of the example, I thought was excellent, and thank you so much, because I'd see, it's always helpful to know specific examples of the great things that go on with professional development, especially. So thank you for going into such detail about that, it was great. The school committee, we need sugar lumps of food stuff as well, so thank you. And then, on the professional growth and evaluation system update, the fact that educational assistants had the mid-year check-in, and non-professional state educators met with administrators for reviews, that are years back when these things wouldn't have happened at Chicaring. So I did just, I, it always makes me extremely proud that we take the time to respect all the people in the building in their professional growth, because I'm sure that doesn't happen in every school on land, I know that it once didn't happen here, so thank you very much. And I have one, just the last paragraph was planting facilities, and it's a personal, it's a little plea for a few months' time for Dawn and Andrew, if that's okay. The back recess field has been, has no more grass. And I know that the Dover parking wreck are very busy, and I think the last time we connected with them, the answer was, we're working out a plan on how to fix it. I just would love you two both to make sure that they stay responsive in that plan to fix it. And as my sporty fifth grader said, Dad, it's really hard, what are they going to do? They can't do it when we're in school, because we're running around all the time on it. Very prescient young man, but there must be a plan somehow, because...
The one that we really worked on and was looking pretty good has gone bad.
Yeah.
It's a lot of use.
And it's clearly something that would happen in the summer, whatever plan there is, they have a parking wreck, but please, please stay on them.
We'll make sure that's on there agenda.
Thank you so much. Good. Any others?
Do we want to talk about generator now, under maintenance facilities or later?
Well, I was going to talk about pretty much all of that event, but I've learned some things too, since I sent this. So let's wait for Dr. Keough's report for that.
But any more questions to the principal? Thank you so much. I'd like to call on the assistant superintendent for her report.
Thank you. So I'll just point out a few things. The English curriculum review process continues, and as you probably noticed last week, you received an email, parents, to please complete a survey relative to your student or student's English experience. And the survey went out to parents, to teachers, and the students will be completing them in school time in grades five, seven, and ten as well. And that, the survey results continue to come in. I've been so impressed with the number of parents who've taken the time to respond and the thoughtful comments that they've written in addition to just bubbling in the answers. So that's really going to be informative to us at the building level and Central Office as we begin to expand and innovate our English curriculum. So thank you.
Beth, will you be sending out a sort of reminder email? My experience in running these sort of surveys is you get a massive response in the first two days, and it goes all the way off, and then a reminder gives you another peek.
Sure, so I can work with Laura and Deb and see if that makes sense to do it either through one of the parent newsletters or a separate reminder email. Absolutely, that's a great idea, thank you. And the second thing I would just like to point out is, as a district, we continue to work on the We Are DS movement, and as Ms. Diallo mentioned, you know, we started this work prior to the event in Florida in February, and it just reiterates how important it is that we continue to talk about the social emotional needs of our students and making sure that every child is included and feels loved and looked after and respected. And as we work at that, work on that as a district team, again, I would just like to commend Ms. Diallo for her work and Dr. Reineman at the school level with the teachers. I think the throwing kindness like confetti display that you saw downstairs and the trailers that have come out in response to that are just awesome. And, you know, I get professional information from a number of sources that I look forward to each week or each month to read up on what's going on in the world, but I must say, Monday morning, I now look forward to Ms. Diallo's newsletters, because I'm always learning something. And she sent out something to the staff this morning that I thought was just excellent. It's about, you know, an activity that teachers can do that to the kids seems just like fun and very on the surface level, but really underneath it, there's so much that the teacher's learning about the kids and their needs and how they interact with each other, and I'm just so thankful for you sharing that professional knowledge with the faculty, so thank you.
Any questions to the assistant superintendent?
I mean, I would just say, you know, this hashtag We Are DS, I mean, obviously, the timing and the way we've been doing it has been fantastic, but just sort of around town, around the school, interacting with kids at different ages, all of us have kids that sort of run the gamut even into the middle and the high school, it's become more prevalent, at least from my lens, and I even wear my hashtag We Are DS t-shirt, embarrass my kids, but I do wear it out in public. So I'm proud Dover Sherburne parent and alum. But regardless, it's just fantastic. So if there's more we can do, if there's resources that are needed, if there's, you know, training or ways to just elevate and highlight it, let's talk about that, because I think it's important that everyone knows about it, and if we're like, oh, shoot, if we had X, we could do more, tell us what that is at some point, or when it's appropriate, and we should talk about those things.
Thank you.
Because there are, again, just, I know there's our opinion, but the school committee has funds, the school committee fund, if there is something particularly, you know, vibrant and key that you feel that we need. And I would just to echo Henry's point, and I'm happy to be told this is wandering into areas that are not responsibility of the schools, but it strikes me that if children are behaving a certain way that is against the values of the schools, some of that is the children, some of that is how they're acting together, some of that is perhaps society, but some of that is perhaps us as parents. And I'm just wondering if there'd been any thought as to if events or personal development for parents who, they don't have to come, we're not going to imprison people who don't, but I imagine there would be, I think, interest in parents learning how to be better parents so that kids can be better kids. I appreciate that the schools aren't responsible for the parents, but given the fact this is a We Are DS thing, I just wondered if there'd been any thought on that.
Sure, there'd actually been a lot. We had a parent event in the works, and it was planned for March fourteenth, and the leadership team had done a lot of planning around it, and Ms. Monique was involved in that as well. We had speakers and a panel lined up. We had parent groups and challenge success ready to advertise and give us some PR. And then unfortunately, the events in Florida happened, and as a school community, we kind of had to take a step back and realize that, you know, while the emotional piece and the cultural piece is important, until students and parents feel safe and really have a handle on what we're doing around the security and the facilities here, no learning is going to happen beyond that. So we have put that on hold for the short term to kind of address some of the security and facility issues, and we have already a plan to go back to if and when the time is right, so.
But it is also in our strategic plan, so I'll tip my hand a little bit and share some of the more specifics that we'll get into when we talk about the strategic plan with the joint committee, but there is mention in there of the need for us to provide education for parents at the earliest ages possible, about what really constitutes success. We're hoping that we can dovetail this with challenge success, because we think a lot of this stuff that goes on with kids goes on early. Messaging, it might be about academics and what constitutes a truly successful kid, but it also might be what constitutes kind of a good kid versus a bad kid. And those messages can become quickly embedded with kids, where they can start to say, I can't hang around with that kid, because that's not a good kid, and I can't hang around with that kid, and the messages kind of sink in. So we, as an adult population, need to ensure that whenever we hear those things, you say, how can we help? It's not always something that we bring someone in for, but rather just be completely conscious of it all the time in everything we do. And, for example, when I was a principal, I would go to the lunchroom and sit with as many disenfranchised students as I could find. And that was important for me to say to all of the kids, we don't have an us and them climate here. That's not how we conduct ourselves. It is a, we are one body, one school system, one high school in that case, one school system, where every single person needs to be valued and appreciated, even with complex challenges. And so we really did want to do this training, to have this panel event for parents, and we're going to continue to have them. This is not, I mean, we're doing this before Parkland events. This is something that's important to me personally as a school leader, it's in my DNA.
Your point on helping parents as early as possible, I think, is key. I think there's a tendency to think that there are elementary school problems, there are middle school problems, and there are high school problems.
Inside those.
Right, but that isn't the case. Sadly, this was, you know, there was a DS fifth grader who was posted on social media vaping two months ago. And this is, you know, I would have thought this was a middle school problem, my son's a fifth grader, it wasn't him, but it was, but these are issues that are coming earlier to parents, and parents, I think, can help, can be educated as early as possible.
Absolutely. So that sort of leads me to my report.
I've got one more thing, one more nice thing to say to Beth. The, in the technology committee paragraph, it was just reading the description of the learning environments that the committee was prioritized, the critical thinking, complex problem solving, collaboration, teamwork, these are life skills, and you and I talked a little bit about training our students not just to get a X score on an exam, but to be able to learn how to be people who can work with people, people who can solve problems, and people who can contribute to society. And though, it was just reading that, it leapt out of me that it was right from that life skills handbook, so thank you for that.
You can do the work on that.
So that, and that is a perfect segue, actually, into, I'm always looking for a segue, but... So our events on Friday with the power outage actually are really a good, a good case for why we need to be active problem solvers as adults. We had a situation where pretty much everything that could go wrong went wrong. Our power went down, we lost our phones temporarily, we had some connection problems with the phones, our computers got knocked out, some of these things at Chicaring while we were okay at the Central Office, and you know what? Quite honestly, you can't plan for everything. This is why we need our children to be creative problem solvers. And it would have been a great case study to just pop kids in and say, so what would you do in this scenario? You're the superintendent, you know, you're the superintendent's assistant, you're this, you're that, play it out. Because we were making decisions on the fly at the Central Office with limited time. We needed to let people know that we had to get the kids out by 1:15. And while I was making my, recording my message to the families, the power went out. So then I had to adapt to the situation, and then it came back on. Oh, thank goodness. So then I start recording it again, and I get a call from the head of CM&amp;D in Sherburne, where there'd been a tree on the wires in Sherburne, and I started recording the message to him. He laughed at me because I had cut off my recording. So these kinds of things happen in the real world, and kids who are the soon-to-be adults need to be able to adapt and respond to these situations. It's really a perfect example. So anytime you see us talking about creative problem solving, being innovative, this is actually what we're getting at, because these are real-world problems. That was real world, and we could have made a lot of big mistakes in that process. So I also want to thank Laura and Deb for their leadership, everything that came back from me, although it was not perfect, nothing ever, ever is, and we always hear about that. But I was overwhelmed with the positive responses that I heard from people about how this was handled, how you cared for their children, they're little kids, and how we got them home safely. And I also want to thank our drivers and our technology folks who stepped up when we had issues, the community, our maintenance people. There were so many things. Connolly Bus Company was fantastic. We had great contact with them, we were able to get all the way through this, so I wanted to thank them for that. It is true that it would have been nice to have... It is true that it would have been nice to have auxiliary power. I think I've learned a lot just about how complicated that would be to put in place at chickering. So it's, I think it's a much deeper issue than I thought. So I don't think it's something that should be dismissed out of hand, but I think it's something that we should definitely take pause before we jump too heavily into it because at the end of the day, we're a small school of five or 600 students and sometimes it's just better to just get them home. That was kind of a dangerous day after all. Some would say, well, it's better to keep them in the school. Others would say it's better to get them home. You could go back and forth on that. But I was really petrified of people being on the roads with these limbs falling all over the place. So we just really wanted to get the kids home. Once the power was down, it seemed like a no brainer. So I did want to mention that. I also wanted to, I also wanted to mention that, you know, in the aftermath of the events in Florida, as a leadership team, the principals and all the other administrators in the system, we have been at the table processing what went on, how does it impact us, what do we need to do to ensure that something like this never happens here? And I want to reiterate to anyone who happens to be listening at home and in this room that schools are actually a lot safer than people realize. And I believe that was in your letter this morning too, wasn't it? The article linked to a Northeastern study that is showing exactly that, that you can build schools into fortresses, but in most instances, it hasn't made that much difference. What does make a difference, I believe, is the education of people, education of the kids, and then not letting kids slip through the cracks. We can't afford to have kids hate their school, hate their school, hate the people in it, hate what it represents, just deep seated hatred. And we, as a country, frankly, should be asking ourselves, how could kids get so angry? How could they have so much hatred? That's not just a bad day at school that made them turn around and come back and do something like that. This was deep seated disdain for that school and for what they represented. And if you look into this, you'll see that that is the common theme. And so it's not always that way, but it is something that I feel absolutely 100% passionate about. And I was so psyched this weekend when I went over to the Kingsbury Club and I saw a kid working out, high school kid with his hashtag, hashtag we are DS shirt. And then I saw one of my neighborhood kids with the shirt on too. It is something that we have to talk about. It is something that we have to say to ourselves. If the kids are in the car, in the car on the way home from soccer and they're saying, oh, that kid is, you know, he's a weirdo and his family is too. We have to say to our kids, you know what? I would really be hurt if somebody was talking about you that way. That would hurt me so bad because that's where the difference is made. And so I'm, I am obviously passionate about it, but I'm going to continue to speak out about this. I will always speak out about this until the bitter end. It is something that I've been on frankly since Columbine. And my dissertation, I've said this a few times over, is on student voice because I believe in that instance, those kids had no voice whatsoever. They had become completely detached from their schools, completely. And so student voice is important to me and that's kind of what I'm talking about here. So when I talk at the secondary level about having advisories where kids have an adult in the school that they connect with, that's related to that. When I talk about having parent educational sessions where we teach them about these things so that when these things come up with their kids, they are prepared to answer, that is what we're talking about. It's all connected. So I'm sorry for the rant, but I just feel very strongly about this. I do very much appreciate that article that you sent out, Laura. And that said, it doesn't mean we should be irresponsible as a school system about security measures. And we do have emergency response teams at every building. We are making sure that they're in place and that we're having conversations. That's very important. And then, and then of course, as I've mentioned to the parents in my mailing to them, we are having our facilities audited, audited, I'm sorry. We are also looking at our emergency protocols to make sure that they are good, practical, well thought out. And then we are also setting up our training with these experts so that we do know how to respond in the most current approaches. That said, our faculty have been trained and have done, for example, lockdown exercises and do annually. So it's not like it's never happened. It's just we want to make sure that we're on top of it. We don't want to be just good enough. We want to be on the cutting edge. So it's really, it's a multi-pronged approach. I have asked the principals to reiterate with their staff, you know, see something, say something. That's not a bad message to put out there. If you see something going on that you think is unusual or strange or bad, I used to say with my own children, dangerous or destructive, then you need to say something. So, so that was pretty much what I wanted to mention about that. Obviously, we've talked about the hashtag we are DS and that's directly connected. We also, along these lines, we have a great professional development event coming up for our leadership team. Again, we need to be fed as well as leaders. So our professional development right now is concentrating on cultural responsiveness. And in this particular case, Robert Dresden, who is a parent here in Dover, is also the, I believe, executive director of the Boston chapter of the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL. And he's going to come and do some training on us on how to respond to acts of hate. So that can be mishandled. So we're looking forward to that. And I also am very appreciative to the school committee in Dover and in Sherburne and in Dover Sherburne for allowing me to attend my superintendent's school at the AASA National Conference in Nashville a few weeks back. Sadly, it was, started on the 15th, the day after the events in Florida, so. But it was really good, it was a good opportunity for me to connect with other people, just to hear about how they were responding and to share ideas about how we can continue to support kids so these things never happen, so.
That's it. Those two presentations you cited, what was so special about them, the Bill Daggett and Sal Khan ones?
Well, Bill Daggett talks about how technology is changing so rapidly that we are, we have to, we need to wrap our heads around it in schools. As he says, anything for which there is an algorithm, there's a computer or bot or something that will be able to handle that job. So any jobs we have out there for which an algorithm could be applied are going to be in jeopardy. So we need to change our thinking about what's important in schools. It's not a myth, for example, that trucks will be driving themselves. So what does that mean? He showed, for example, a video of a brick laying machine, it's just and laying the bricks. That was, that was manual labor. It still is in most instances, but this technology is coming and it's coming really, really fast. So we have to be on the front end of that. And I'm glad you brought that up because to that end, in fact, we're heading out tomorrow, again, part of the strategic plan is to get out there and see what's happening in the world. We have a visit scheduled for tomorrow morning with some of our administrators and some of our technology people. We're visiting a private school called Meadowbrook School, which I think is in Weston. And I met some folks over there. I loved what they had to say about the way they are using technology. I loved what they had to say about use of innovation centers. And I loved what they had to say about embracing diversity. So we're visiting and we'll see what we can learn. It's that kind of cross pollination that I think is critical. So Bill Daggett was all over that. And in the case of Sal Khan, Khan, Sal Khan invented the, or is the founder of the Khan Academy, which is, he had, he started with a goal of essentially saying, I want to provide a free education to anyone who can access a computer anywhere in the world. And the, it's just an amazing, amazing story. I was really moved by his presentation about how he's reached the farthest corners of this globe where there's just such incredible poverty, but somebody was able to get internet in there and some computers in there and these kids are flourishing. And he talked about, for example, something that I thought was incredibly cool, and I mentioned it to Dawn and she said, that happened with my son. So the college board now for the PSAT will, will score your tests. And then if you give them permission, they'll send your data to Khan Academy and Khan Academy will then send it back and say, these are the sections, these are the things that you need to study on Khan Academy and we will raise your scores, how much?
I think it's at 60 points, 60 to 80 points. So it's a partnership they have with the college board now. So it's free, I mean, which is great because parents spend a lot of money prepping for those tests.
So it's, but it gives you an idea of how much the world is changing and how much technology is changing everything. So going to things like that is just, it's inspiring. It's inspiring and the worst part is I'm by myself. That's the worst part. I want to sit down and talk to other people, think about the stuff we can do. Like, so that's why I'm excited about this trip, little trip, but tomorrow. And so.
If you have any, and if you go to any places and have any slide packs you ever feel like sharing, do.
You're volunteering to go with them.
Nice. I can, I can come up with some slides, actually. These slides I have.
Well, Khan Academy, Khan Academy, Khan Academy is how I keep up with my fifth and eighth grader on maths. When they say, Dad, can you help me with this? I have, yeah, just one second.
Well, the reason that he was able to take it from just this tiny little initiative to this global program was that Bill Gates was also using it for his son. And he said, this is just so cool. I need to find this person. And so the rest is history.
Any comments or questions to Andrew?
He had a TED Talk, it was very inspiring.
TED Talk? I'm sure. I haven't seen that, but I'm sure it was. He's, he's really impressive. That's awesome.
Rachel, any thoughts? The only thing I wanted to say was on the power outage, what, how do we learn from it is, again, echoing what Henry said a few months ago on another issue, if you need anything, please come and tell us. Whatever, what you think you need and is appropriate for this, whether it's, you know, something to help central office always stay online, always have power, because it seems to me that the nightmare scenario would be everything going down at the same time. And if, whatever it is, you are the experts to know what you need, but please, just wanted to reiterate, come back to us and ask.
Am I correct in thinking that the generator wouldn't solve the phone or the internet computer issue, correct? At least if it's at my house, that's okay.
You'd have to have a really, really, really big generator, right?
Oh, you would?
Yeah. I mean, you, you know.
They come in, they come in different sizes. So, you know, to conduct business as usual, you would need a massive generator, pretty powerful generator, a generator, a very expensive generator and all the infrastructure so that everything becomes wired to it. So that's not as easy as it sounds. And then, and then in the case of the water, that was knocked out at the town level, the pumping system.
Electricity, right, to run the pumps.
To run the pumps. So, so then we lost, that's when we lost toilets and that wouldn't have helped us with the generator. So I think what's happened at chickering through the years is they've just concluded that if something like this happens, it's better to just send the kids home. It's a subject of debate, but I think that's.
In most cases, the reason why it's happening is there's something outside that's the weather or.
Pretty significant.
And so, you know, you dismiss anyway.
Yeah.
It does, it's hard in the not to have the phone, I would imagine, that.
Well, we do have a phone, we do have a phone that we can connect with them all the time on. So we do have.
There's a hard wired phone here.
Okay.
For emergencies.
And I don't, I mean, I was on the outside, but I had three kids here who made it home on the bus and everyone was happy and safe. And so from my perspective, you guys did a great job.
We had, we, we had some confusion and it was my fault, but I essentially hadn't double checked that policy about what we do for emergency dismissal, which is everybody goes home on the bus. And so I.
Included about picking up.
I said that picking up and that's created some confusion. And so, but that's what happens with things like this. You figure it out and it doesn't happen again. So I apologize if that impacted anyone. For the most part, it seemed like most people were able to meet their kids. And if, sometimes the buses were delayed by downed trees, they had to take alternate routes and downed wires, and that's what caused the delay. So parents are sitting there waiting for their kids. They figure the ride can't be this long, when in fact, it really was. We had a bus in Sherburne that was probably an hour and a half late.
Yeah.
No, maybe.
Or half an hour late.
Half an hour late, but the whole run took probably over an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Does Connolly have any technology where you can track the location of the buses? So then, I mean, just thinking about if we knew if a bus is going off its sort of route for a known reason and there can be some communication. I mean, I don't want to over engineer it.
Well, don't the bus drivers have access to get in trouble?
They all have radios.
I mean, here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm saying, you know, they're not even going to have an app, but you can just see the buses.
There is, there is.
You know, I mean, they do it.
Yeah, no, but it's something we could request, but we have discussed that in the past and I don't know if it's something that we really want to.
It's not all.
High school kids could use it and then it could run the bus first thing in the morning and not have to wait out there.
In the spirit of challenge success, we're trying to separate a little bit. And sometimes that can go, that can backfire. So I can see the benefits, absolutely. I think that technology is there, but that's why I think I agree with you.
Exactly.
It might be something we would want to discuss a little further, that's all.
Yeah.
Not necessarily saying it's a bad idea because it could have its benefits.
We'd like an app to know where you are.
Actually, Bill Daggett says that can be embedded in my arm.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, everybody for the reports. We have the warrant report for your consideration of the list of the approved warrants. And thank you very much, Rachel Spelman, for all the work on that. And moving on to the monthly FYET financial report. This is Vatori.
Yes, so when you're packing, you have your financial statements as of February 28th. It all washes, which is a nice thing to say. So we've got some positive variances in salaries and operating expenditures, which I detailed for you, which offset the slightly reduced out of district negative variance from 105 to 92,000. Again, that's made up of a couple slight changes in placements. So we're in really good shape right now. So the way this would work now that we've all spent so much time talking about circuit breaker, this means that 100% of circuit breaker goes back, we go back to the town because we've completely covered our operating expenses with what we've been budgeted. And that's not always the case. If you remember, we've had a couple of years where we've actually spent our whole budget plus some circuit breaker. So we're, you guys are in good shape.
And I just want to, again, when I heard about it, it was great to see, but the, the low utility costs and the deal, the pricing that we have.
Well, that's basically in the heat, yeah. I mean, literally, I don't know who has oil heat, but we're paying $1.63 a gallon, which that's like highway robbery based on what I'm paying. So that definitely helps us. You never know how that's going to be, so we, we have to budget assuming that we're not going to get $1.63. So that's a, that's a chunk of that variance. And we're starting to, you know, once we get a year underneath our belts, we'll be able to see the impact of the air conditioning on our electricity bill, but at the same time, at least our supply price went down 20% in December. So I think that's going to help any increase that we see on usage from the new units.
And any, so when do you think we'll be able to have a look at the, because you've had the LED fixtures as well?
Exactly. So I think you're going to have to let a year go by and then have that year to compare because every month is different, but to get a year of usage and then compare it. So next, once we have a year, we can start looking at the months and seeing how we look.
So I can't remember if I'd mentioned to this group or not, but the, I did some work as trustee of the library, looking at if there'd been any decrease of electricity usage because the LED fixtures there, we were seeing between 15 to 25% month on month reductions, which was.
So it's the winter months that we'll be able to really see that, but the shoulder months where we're using the AC, we're going to get, it's going to be hard to see that. So we are looking for the winter. So we are looking for the winter months. I will add to one other thing, when you talked about Park and Rec, this happens between your January meeting and this meeting, but if you remember back in the fall, Park and Rec came to you just to get approval to do some dugout work. That is actually going to go live and be done this spring. So just if you see people working there, know that they have reached out to us, but we confirmed it's already been approved by you guys, so they'll.
That's on the lower field.
The lower, yeah.
Great. Okay. Any questions to Dawn? That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Excellent. Okay, so moving on to the annual school committee vote on Massachusetts school choice law. Just by way of background for people, this is an annual vote that school committees take on whether to decide to receive students resident in other towns. And I was looking at the data, so there are 141 towns who decide not to do this, there are 180 towns that decide to do it. You have Medway and Holliston saying yes, you have Dedham and Hopkinton saying no. It really depends on the situation with the particular town, their facilities, how much capacity they have, how they are in their, in their particular situation. It is worth noting that the, for towns who decide to say yes and to take students from other towns, there is a cap on the tuition monies that come per student of $5,000. And the last calculations we did on a per student cost of education at Chicaring School was 16, 17, slightly north of that. So just by contrast.
It'd be more at the region.
Yes, it'd be more in the region. And we, in recent years, this committee has voted no.
Can you just explain what exactly does that mean? If you gave someone a choice, anybody?
It would mean, it would mean you, it doesn't even have to be a budding towns, it can be students from any other town could apply for a place at a DS school, in a Chicaring school.
And what would it be, what would they be granted based on what?
That would mean they could come to Dover Public Schools from start to finish. You can't pull the plug on it just because your school changed its course. So if Westwood sent 15 kids over here, those students are going to be here and they're going to get, we're going to get $5,000 in reimbursement, but it actually costs us 17 to 20,000 to educate them. So it's, that's why districts typically don't do it, especially around here. Now, it might not be such a bad deal if you're only paying 10,000 or 11,000 or you're at the lower end of the amount per pupil.
And it's if you have capacity. So if you have capacity, then it's almost like, it just lowers your fixed cost a little bit.
Right, if you have empty classrooms.
A lot of places bang on that sort of extra revenue.
Oh, okay.
We actually have Dover and Sherburne students who opt for school choice. So we do have some kids here who go into.
And we pay those towns.
Why?
Sometimes it could be that they used to live there and they, they moved and they can still school choice in.
Sometimes it could be a family situation with separated parents and one parent lives in town A, other parent lives in town B.
It's also, we have several that do the online schools. So for various reasons, and there's several online schools out there, that's also a school choice where we cover that tuition.
So that's on the low end of, does that come out of district?
No, that would be out of your Chapter 78 first school choice.
So the vote we have to take today is to decide or not to be a receiving town.
I'd make a motion.
Yes, Henry?
I'd move to have the Dover Public School not participate in the school choice program for the 2018-19 school year.
Second, Rachel, thank you. Any discussion? Or those in favor of Henry's motion? Thank you very much. Tremendous. So there, I'd like to point out to people that in the consent agenda, thank you for reading them and for them being in the consent agenda. There's the Dover School Committee minutes of January 23rd and there is a donation from the ExxonMobil Gas, this happens every year, $500, which we are very grateful. Thank you for it being in the consent agenda. And then there are communication points, the Middlesex Bank letter that was mentioned at the last meeting, which is their donation to the DSEF, which is very considerable and very appreciated. And the minutes in the regional school committee and the Sherburne School Committee meetings in January as well. We have.
You should just take a vote on your consent.
On the vote, yeah. So we need to vote to accept the consent agenda, the minutes and the donation. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Henry. Hold a second, please. Thank you, Rachel. I'm fine form today, Rachel. Any discussion?
Down there.
All those in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you so much. Excellent. So at 7:45, we're going to adjourn the open meeting. There is an executive session. We will not return to open meeting afterwards, but the purpose of it is to discuss the form of security personnel devices strategies with respect thereto. So thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.